We do not have our monthly, our typical payments, financials. They will first will be here next week. You didn't, right?
No, I'll let you know. I'm gonna send them to you. I'm gonna send them to you through the.
They're in the mail.
They're in the mail.
They're in the cloud.
I'm going to send them out to you and we'll retrieve them on your tablets. Hopefully before the end of the week. So, um, where you all get your best meeting.
Okay, well, give it away.
It was tab with some financial statements.
Okay, so let's go. We got a check register to look at here. One of them we're missing, four, three, C. Anyone have any questions?
It's not a question. I mean, first on page three. And I had asked Mr. Bailey about this before he left a couple of times. He said he's gonna look into it.
Oh, okay.
Just the dispatch service bills. It's basically eighty percent police, twenty percent fire, no charge to EMS. And I just wondered, I mean, that eighty, twenty thing was initially set up when I was here based on calls for dispatch service? I don't know if that's still the proper allocation or not. I just asked Dave to take a look at that and see if, you know, and I mean EMS gets a review for a call, so.
I can look at that, sure. I can have that for the next meeting and look at some of the.
Split that out a little bit.
Okay.
And it's kind of the same issue on page seven. The server forty-four percent was charged to the police department. If that's the proper allocation of usage.
That one I did see based on the number of computers.
Okay, okay.
Also, I see we were some discussion about the percentage allocation. Maybe this time last year that it had to do with the police's twenty-four seven. I mean, there, there were calls all the time and not in deference to fire EMS. Actually, EMS, they probably has a lot of assets. Majority of our steer has probably.
Should pay.
Should.
And when we initially did it, they based it on total calls for what they call calls for dispatch service, which included running registrations and stuff. And with the advent of the MDT's in the cars, officers don't call there as often. They just run them from the cars. There may be a reallocation would be appropriate there.
And you get a three down, I should now.
Okay. I didn't say that.
You said let the record settle.
Reflect, that was Mr. Barnes that said that. And then the last question I had on that particular check register, I had so many, would be on page eight. The legal fees for Amor Cunningham, the forty-four thousand. I know we had appropriated some more. I don't know if that's all that one case or not.
It is.
But we had appro- allegedly, we were appropriating an extra ten thousand for the trial in August. But this would use up everything we appropriated.
This, this was, takes us through, we are paying current through the end of March.
March of?
This year.
Okay, so we don't have anything. I thought when we did the revised appropriation, we were putting in the extra money and cover the August?
No, not yet. Well, it depends on how you want to state that. See, has time put in.
We're gonna have a trial in August.
Well, and so, but what we appropriated was just to bring us up to have enough to be current with Mr. Morrison through March. But obviously, some of that time that we've already paid for is towards the August work that he'll do.
Wow.
We had the bill, the larger bill from, that we approved and we had appropriations for that. And then, I think you had asked him when he was, when we presented that resolution, that took us through last year, but what about, you know?
This year.
Through now, yes.
And now there is a trial coming through August. And I, and maybe my misunderstanding, but I thought we revised any appropriation to cover the anticipated expense through 2015.
I think it's through, I think this was to bring us up current, but I have to look back at the encumbrance. There may be some more encumbered in there.
There's only, we only had, we made it forty. There wasn't even forty-four, I believe. Maybe there was, I don't know.
Okay, so to clarify, this is for his bills from last September through?
It was farther back than that. Like two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
Like April two thousand thirteen through fourteen. That's like two years worth of work.
For the span of eight. And this is a couple of twenty-some thousand that already paid.
Correct.
Previously. And he had a trial set in August.
We didn't pay that, I'm sorry. And that's gonna not truly end it, right?
Well, I don't know. It's a trial, so we'll see. I mean, I don't know. Gary, I, other members of council, I don't. My whole thing was, the first bill on this, we got surprised, I have a clue, we had a tight budget. We get these bills that are substantial that we haven't appropriated for. And we know we're gonna have additional expense. I don't know if we need to be looking at that. Are you gonna wait till we get the expense and then do an emergency appropriation once it's already over? That's my concern.
I think, I think we kind of talked with Jack Morrison as well when we bumped this up, or you know, the last resolution that we approved, we allocated more money because of that. And he said he didn't have any way of knowing what it's gonna be, so he didn't want us to.
No, but.
I think we had that discussion. He said, okay, well, we'll just wait. So, I can tell you that we're current with his bill. Now, that may be something you wanted to discuss with him.
I don't know. I mean, my thoughts are, we should appropriate some more, because we know we're gonna have another bill.
We can.
We're gonna, we're gonna talk about the budget anyhow, so.
I think the time to talk about that is with Morrison, so.
All right, that's fine. Let's keep that.
That's all the questions I had.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Next, we have a register five dash one, C.
Sorry to be the question man tonight, but again, this would be allocation on page four. Fifty percent of the happening expense goes to the police department?
They're on the green carpet.
Okay, okay. And water administration share, what I take it? Okay, thank you.
We did also pay the outstanding bill that we had for the magistrate too. I think that was in this register.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay. Now, I think Tammy also included the chief, include four dash one E.
Yes.
All that is, is the insurance, yeah. We're working on that. I'm gonna ensure that you saw that also. There are a couple of questions for the last, the last meeting that I wanted to respond to, too. From the May nineteenth meeting, I was asked if the water department charges a fee for NSF checks and they did mention Krista, forty-five dollars NSF charge. Also, that I think Mike had asked if the meeting agenda could be posted on the website. And I asked Tammy about that. She said she'd post it on the Friday meeting.
I was gently reminded.
Oh, she already.
But that's been a regular occurrence for some time. Shame on us for not. I stood corrected.
I did know. So, that's all.
Okay, any other questions on any of the check registers? Okay, again, as I mentioned before, we're not on the state, so can we drop down to get a couple of ordinances? First, we have the section one sixty-one oh four. So, can you guys pick up? First, do you have anything on that?
We have ones. We have a expert from Opers come in and do some training with Tammy and Carol. And she noticed, I kinda winged this. And we have her in front of me. Let's see, I think the.
The law director. And it's a contract.
They're not, they're not employees and so we have to, we should stipulate that in our, in our ordinance.
Oh, I asked what was. She was looking at our ordinance and she said that it, that some of the, the Opers requirements had changed and she needed our ordinance to reflect that. So, I gave it to Jack and gave him the information so he could have that incorporated.
And I'm assuming B three B is a market deals with the law director.
I believe, I believe also reserve officers.
Well, this only talks about the law director.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't read the ordinance.
I don't see if you want to.
I just wanna see what one sixty-one oh four.
One sixty-one is the one that pertains to employees.
Right, I wanna see what oh four, B three B is, make sure that it only deals with the law director. And we don't have some other thing screw up.
Actually, two fifteen oh six. Deals with overtime.
B. Well, this.
We.
Can't be three.
Talk time.
Yeah, the B three is just the.
Law director.
Also, up for which we denied is proposed ordinance point two dash oh six. And that is the overtime compensation. So, it's basically, I'm trying to figure out what the difference is.
I don't think the holiday section has changed. It's the comp time.
That's what I was wondering. Now, is comp time, because I couldn't figure it out from the verbiage here, is comp time straight time or is it time and a half?
It has to be time and a half.
It's time and a half if they choose to be paid rather than take the time off.
Well, it's time and a half. Comp time too, though, right?
No, if they, here's time. Let me, let me, let me think it through. They, okay, for example, this came up with the service department when they are working a lot of hours, we get to the snowstorm. So, instead of, they can choose, say they worked eight hours overtime, they can choose to have that as comp time or be paid overtime.
So, but they can choose twelve hours pay or twelve hours.
I think you're right.
Twelve.
Right.
Yeah, because fair labor law changed a number of years ago. And the, the only concern I would have, and this may have changed with a subsequent court ruling, but before I retired, there was a court ruling that limited the ability of an employer to deny comp time off because it was overtime earned. And basically, somebody had comp time and they wanted it off, you had to give it to them.
Oh, yeah, we, we have it in there. It's their choice.
Well, right, truly elected, but I'm saying later on, we say in section two, compensatory time must be approved by the department head in advance of the time off. It was a court case that found that related, paid a price for this, that somebody had comp time on their books. And they wanted it off, you had to give it off. You couldn't tell them no. Because it was earned overtime. And I just wanna make sure that that's changed.
You're saying, you're saying that, that no matter when they want it off.
You had to give it to them.
You had to give it to them.
Right, that's what that court case dealt with.
Well, I think that's, that, yeah, we don't have, we're not trying to say that they can.
Well, no, you're saying to take the time off later, they have to have approval.
Well.
Yeah.
That's what this ordinance says.
Well, and that means, like, well, for instance, this week, Thursday, we have, I think, two or three of the, the workers from the service department are gonna take off.
Right.
So, this is just a courtesy. You need to let your, you know, supervisor ahead of time. Jim has to be able to plan. They can't, what that is in there for is saying, you can't, you know, we don't want you to call that morning.
Well, but when you say it must be approved, to me, that implies that it could be denied.
Oh, no, I can't, maybe it's the wording that.
If you notify, it'd be better.
I see what you're saying.
Maybe the word grants.
I got you. Yeah, you're right. I see, I see your point.
And then the only other.
Because now, like, coming from, I know what we were intending to say, but reading it cold, that's good, yeah.
And one other issue with comp time is you have to cover the shifts. And I don't know that it happens in the service department, but in the police department it happens. Will this apply to the police or does their contract?
It's their own contract.
That's a contractual issue, so they don't get comp time.
There was another reason that we wanted to get this specified in our, you know, make it more clear in our ordinances.
Okay, so the police don't get comp time in their contract? I'm asking. I've never seen.
No, they don't, that's correct.
Okay. Because if you end up having to use overtime to cover it, then it compounds. Because you work eight hours over, I give you twelve hours off. And then if I pay that overtime, I'm paying eighteen hours to cover the original eight hour. And it just keeps compounding. A lot of cities got this, that's a problem, so we need to think about this a little bit.
Okay, the overtime section.
But is it, again, getting back to my original question as far as this, the time you're compensated, not straight time, but that time and a half, is that stated in there? Because it's not stated here, is there, does it?
Well, it's overtime rate at one and a half, and it may select, overtime compensation may be selected in a formal compensatory time. So, to me, that says it is time and a half, because the previous section talks about time and a half. But I don't know. I mean, I guess.
Yeah, it still could be spelled out a little more clearly, I think.
I mean, I wouldn't hurt to put it in there, compensatory times at the time and a half.
Yeah, I think I like that. I like that. Okay, and then we'll reword this section about the comp time. Yep, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right, we have the proposed resolution, form fifteen dash eighteen, up for first reading tonight, and that is authorizing mayor's dinner for these purchase agreements based for the dump trucks and the ambulance, ambulance cots. It is about thirty-four times seen this.
Well, now, here's the, here is the, here is the problem. In our efforts to want to work with People's Bank that now provides commercial services, we want to work with our local companies. We, we, the council had approved for us to enter into a commercial, a commercial loan. I later found out that we need to, we can only do a lease purchase. So, we asked People's Bank to change the commercial loan to a lease purchase agreement. And the nice thing with the lease purchase agreement is we don't have to count it as debt according to the state. So, we asked, this is why we have to have the resolution, because the commercial loan is no longer, we didn't do a commercial loan, we had to, we have to, correct term is a lease purchase agreement.
What's the interest rate of them?
Jack has the documents with him. We can ask him when he brings it. It better be the same. It should be the same as what we had in the, I haven't actually seen it. He worked with, I think, Browse McDowell, back and forth to get the wording finalized. I think they just finalized it prior to even yesterday.
Is this a pass automatically thing or?
Yes, we'll need it passed automatically or emergency.
That's better.
Yeah, because they'd like to have the paperwork signed. We need to have it signed this evening and then Peoples can pick up the documentation in the morning. And then they are going to pay, as you know, we already have the two dump trucks, so they're gonna pay Cleveland Freight Line directly. And the two cots have not come in yet. They've been ordered, the cots for the EMS. So, then People's Bank will pay, Stryker, I think is the name of the company, directly.
Another comment I have, like, maybe in discussion on this, we should admit that this replaces the commercial loan, so it doesn't look.
Oh, that's true. Okay.
Oh, it's, we hear about repeal. No, it's in.
No, but that's true. Does it say?
Same, same.
You have to, you need to repay or other.
It repeals.
Section two states.
And the other question I would have, this is just something that's been one of my constant complaints. Section one talks about the mayor's authorized, enter this contract in the form attached here too as exhibit A. I have no exhibit A. We never get those exhibits. And I just have a personal problem voting for something that says I've got the exhibit and I never saw it.
Okay, let's ask.
So, I would ask in the future, if an ordinance says there's an attached exhibit, please provide the exhibit.
I'm wondering, Steve, if that's the contract. Maybe so, let's ask Jack. Because I don't, I have, I haven't seen either. So, let's ask him if that's the contract.
That's not there.
Is it exhibit A or was it, yeah, I have the same question.
Because we're being asked to vote on something that says it's attached, it's not.
It's not. I agree. Okay, last there.
Any other questions, Thomas?
Sorry.
No, those are good questions. I appreciate your, the detail.
In the interest of time, I'll see over item fifteen to go through, put it in order. Mr. Barnes, I believe you had provided us with some information on business loss carry forward.
Yes, I sent you, well, the, sent everyone a email that I, well, excerpt from an email that I received from my account. And I had done a little research with the companies that provide data, provide tax information, CCA. And within the CCA companies, this isn't statewide, whatever CCA powers, they have forty-five cities, whatever, so it's not complete. But within those following community, the stamp and five year laws carry forward, Stone Falls Town, which you can't have that in Silverway, Akron also does, but it's only for three years. And also the IRS allows a twenty-year loss carry forward. Of the, well, it's forty cities, of forty cities that are members of CCA, there are only four that don't allow, that includes Mono Falls, Dresden, Russell's Point, and West Liberty. So, again, I'd like for us to, to move this forward and, and, you know, change our ordinance, our code to, to allow loss carry forward for five years.
And I was gonna say, you, you.
Yes.
Well, I would like for us to ask, I sent the mayor a follow-up email as well to talk to law director about that and see where we stood on him. And I'll let the mayor maybe address that. We choose.
And I have my problem initiating the loss carry. The state's gonna, the state's gonna mandate it anyways, and there are, there are businesses in Mono Falls that benefit from it. The, the moving breasts and some additional expenses, you know, twenty thousand dollar grief bid in, I'm sure that that's gonna take a chunk out of their, their profits. Cornerstone's probably going to show a loss this year and a lot more than their profits. So, if rebuilding that, so, you know, I, I think it's a business currently, I mean, was it just enact what the state's gonna do now and, or one of the few cities around that does not permit that. If this council wished, should we also put up the legislation and we have, have a query the next meeting.
Any objections to that?
I don't, but that's okay.
We didn't, we'll discuss.
Good thing.
Thanks, Mr. Barnes, for researching.
Gary, one other comment. Everyone has a signed acknowledgement of city, but not a property document. If you could sign that this evening before you take your tablet with you, make sure that I get that back this evening. I will make it happen or you can have a query the next meeting.
John, you'll be, you'll be available Friday.
I'll be available morning, night, yeah. I figured out one problem. My LP does not work.
Oh, that all goes down.
Then you're done. That's why we're together. LP does not work.
And then you just talk about the jerk.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, I'll talk, please.
Hey, Steve Stahl.
Here.
John Hecknowar.
Here.
Mike Barnes.
Here.
Jim Ayana.
Here.
Eric Toth.
Here.
Sam Yusick.
Here.
Brian Steinwell.
Here. Okay, we need approval minutes for the regular council meeting held Tuesday, May nineteenth, two thousand fifteen.
I will go through the minutes for the May nineteenth meeting.
I will second.
Okay, Mr. Stahl.
Come on, sit. Any discussion?
I have none.
Okay, this is the first, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Stahl, next. Okay, thank you. Mr. Ayana.
Yes.
Mr. Yusick.
Yes.
Mr. Hecknowar.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Toth.
Yes.
Mr. Steinwell.
Yes.
Passes moving on. Reports of officials, mayor's report, Mayor Larson.
Okay, thank you very much. Is anybody here from the Wilbur makeover? No? Okay. Unless somebody shows up from the Wilbur makeover, we're gonna hold off on doing the business presentation. Hopefully, they're coming under disapproval. The, you know, the, I gotta, I think, I think they're coming. Your footsteps. There she is. You're just sitting behind, please.
Ooh, I'm gonna miss the other half of our staff. Thank you.
If you come up.
Mr. Mayor, I thought they said they had more staff.
You have more staff?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, we'll hold on, please. I have been in contact with Nick and Larry Barone of the Formosa Market. I'm sure everybody's read the, the paper and that. They are definitely planning on rebuilding. They, they, they seem to be more concerned with their staff, which is, which is good, that, you know, they, they value their staff. And I know that, I know that they're anxious to, to overcome this challenge and get back in the business. And we will do whatever we can to work with them. We did, we did bring a water trailer up so that they could keep the plants watered while, while they're trying to get rid of those. The fire inspection, the state fire marshal was there and there will probably be two weeks before his report is final. I know the insurance company was coming the other day and, you know, we'll, as soon as they have the okay to remove the remains of the building and that and get going, you know, we'll, we'll try to handle all the permitting and that as expedient as possible. You know, it was quite devastating. I've gotta, I gotta admit, though, that the, I believe this. I've gotta, I gotta admit, though, that, um, the, uh, I believe this is the first time in twelve years that I can remember that Chief Chafin has taken a vacation. Um, and, uh, I did, uh, I did send him a text and told him that seems that Chief poses a bad influence on him and that if he wants to continue with vacations, he's taking, or change his ways. We also had a, we also had a fire Saturday during the pancake breakfast, um, at Snuggle Paper Products. Uh, it was a, they were working that Saturday and they noticed a pan in the ceiling smoking. Um, and luckily, uh, it was a minor occurrence and they took care of it quite fast, uh, right at the beginning of the pancake breakfast, which was a success, so. Um, the, uh, as soon as, uh, as soon as the other staff members, um, arrive, uh, we're gonna do the presentation of the business of the month. And we're, if you want to continue until that time, I'll answer any questions.
I have another couple of questions. Uh, the, uh, I got a bunch of calls. I think possibly folks get to, uh, Republic on the trash bills this month, said your next bill may be like a rate increase. I thought we, uh, had a one-year contract. Everybody's to that, maybe just something that they put on all their bills?
Yeah, it may be, and obviously, they're not gonna increase the rates here.
Okay, so that's, that's what I told people. I was pretty sure it's probably something that they put on all their bills. It would not be, but I just wanted to make sure we were...
We have a contract and we'll do the contract.
Well, we'll, someone will call. We'll have someone call and say...
We already did.
Okay.
Okay, well, I just, I got half a dozen calls.
And on the topic, I've had a lot of complaints in person to the trash can put in the middle driveway. So I don't know if we need to address that.
We have addressed that and, um, the, uh, one driver has been removed from the route and we've been assured that, uh, the, uh, they will, uh, they've addressed that problem. Uh, I did not see, uh, that problem last week as I drove around. I did see some lids that were up. I did see people that had placed their trash cans in the driveway and I would suspect that those trash cans were placed back in the driveway, but, um, the, uh, you know...
Yeah, Martin, I'm okay with it, but I didn't see it quite often.
I believe, I believe those are, um, the amount of occurrences that that happened are very minimal, uh, obviously very boisterous, um, but, um, the, we have addressed that and, uh, we've been assured that, uh... So now that the...
Good, good.
Lids being open, um...
I'm not caring about that.
You know, um, you go rendezvous, community, you're gonna find that, uh, that lids are open.
Yeah.
There is, there is a, uh, a service that is offered that, uh, that they will go up and get the trash cans and bring them down and put them back up to the house. Uh, that's available if people, uh, wanna utilize that, so.
Good, good.
And then one of the simple recycling, I just, uh, seems like a good thing. I was just curious. I wasn't aware of it. I mean, is there a cost or to the city or to residents or anybody? It seems that you pay no cost to the residents.
Yeah, um, the, uh, we've been, we've been working with, uh, simple recycling, um, for, uh, uh, most, most of the, most of the years. Um, you had, uh, reports in March, uh, the March tenth of, uh, Mr. Dakota's status report, uh, May twelfth that was reported on. Article was on the website in May eleventh. Um, in addition, uh, it was published in, uh, Stoic Century and, um, on the twenty-fourth of May and on the thirty-first, and the information was mailed out to each home on May twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Um, and it, there is no cost to the residents or to the city. It, uh, it's, uh, if people wanna use it, uh, it's very simple. They put the unwanted or unusable clothing as a list that was supplied to every residence of, uh, what they will accept. Uh, and you put it out on the curb with the trash and then they go around and they pick that up and they'll leave a, uh, replacement bag. Uh, the city, uh, could get somewhere around three thousand dollars a year, um, from it. Um, and it's just, uh, it's just an under service that, uh, will help stop things that, items that can be recycled stay out of the, uh, out of the dumps and, uh, you know...
Well, it's a good service and I just, but torn clothing's okay too, right? The way I read their information.
Because I take... Unwanted or, or unusable, right? It's determined.
Right, it seems like...
You just looked at, the mayor handed that and had sent it. I read that at the last meeting. Um, Cog Falls and several other area cities we checked are using that, uh, service and, you know, we investigated it.
Good thing.
It's a good deal.
Yeah, I've also called, had two that was in, uh, Mrs. Dakota's update from April fourteenth also. She talked about it three times. Right here. I had to ask her because I couldn't remember, but...
Well, we'll ask her.
Folks, hear your presentation.
Would, would you like to introduce your staff? This is, uh, Martha Wilber, um, of the Wilbur Legal Group, which is right behind us, LLC. Would you like to introduce your staff?
Certainly. Uh, this is my, um, my associate attorney, Helen Oliver, and this is Sarah Sabrin, who is our paralegal and Laura Elias, who is our legal sister.
And, um, the, uh, Wilbur Legal Group has been part of Mono Falls business community for many years. Martha and your daughter specialize in elder law. Together, they understand real problems and issues of aging clients' experience and they have proven track right for the expertise and experience in counseling clients in a variety of areas. Um, we've had, uh, we've had occasion on, uh, some residents, um, that are in need of help to, uh, consult with, uh, with Martha and, um, the, uh, you know, it's, it's an area which is, uh, if, if you have aging parents or yourself are aging, it's really planning is the key. Um, the, uh, they, they provide a great service, uh, and we've talked with them. Mono Falls, they have expanded. They are now the Kramer, uh, Kramer Group. And we want to present this to you, um, in appreciation of your business and if you'd like to add anything.
Thank you very much.
Feel free.
We do. We enjoy the community tremendously and we certainly appreciate the support and appreciate recognition. Thank you very much.
You too. Okay, unless there's, uh, any other questions, that ends my report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, what record, Mr. Morrison?
Nothing to report right now. I have some comments I'll send if we want to get to the rest section.
That question about maybe planning commission or not, that's a pretty good question. Okay, now, um, let me just have a discussion with the planes, mention that, hence the process. Um, you know, we discussed the existing signs and replacing the facing, whatnot. My question, I guess, is how to know zoning or correct zoning ordinance for replacing an existing sign facing, right? Or no, you don't, you don't get zoning specifics to ask my question. I don't feel zoning is just a different thing than facing.
Right now, we can.
For existing sign? Okay, no question. I thought we did, I thought we just had to...
I was, I was at during my committee meeting.
Okay, well, that actually was, I guess my question is, if somebody does, um, replace a existing sign facing, what? Do you have authority to add any sort of punishment mechanism in place?
Well, right now, if they do that, it's a, it's a nuisance because it's violation of zoning.
Yeah, yeah, then that would actually... I thought, I'm really, I thought you said it wasn't zoning, so we're playing it.
Just a thing, tell it for you guys here, Jack, on the appropriations, the, we have your, when we upped the appropriations before for the lottery, I thought that was precarious with the year. With some anticipated, but for us, uh, we have paid the entire appropriation for forty-four thousand. I know we have a trial coming in August and I know you, you don't know for sure, but there's better, I just don't like getting hit with five, six, seven thousand dollar bills, whatever, out of the blue, they have appropriated.
No, if you remember what we discussed, I told you that I would submit the bill current through, I think it's April, and I will not submit another bill until next year. There will be no further bills this year. Okay. Because I have no way of knowing where the trial is gonna be, if there's an appeal. I have no idea.
Right.
So what I represented everyone, ensured everyone, is I would not submit another bill in the meantime of this fiscal year. So you wouldn't have to go back and adjust the provision.
Okay, very good.
And so when you get to budget time, we'll have a better idea of what we're now...
That's it.
It doesn't affect me at all.
Mr. Morrison, too, uh, any progress on the memorandum, memorandum of agreement with the park district at this point?
No, the mayor and I have to talk about it.
Again?
The mayor and I have to talk about it.
They, they changed, they, they have changed, uh...
And new direction. And new direction.
Okay, that's good. And then, uh, the easement related to, to Dana?
I'm still looking.
Um, and then, you know, we'll probably talk about this later with, uh, with planning commissions as well, but, uh, I mean, the charter grants them certain powers. Is there a minimum authority or power that they have to have legally? I mean, it seems like we have a little bit of mission creep here. Maybe councils allow them to have more oversight, more authority than, than need of the charter. So I guess the question is...
The charter outlines what their duties and authority are.
But, and we, we could change that and we have to...
No, you can't change the charter.
Not the charter, but we've allowed them additional responsibility.
Well, you can place additional responsibility on them by ordinance, but you cannot reduce the powers that they have under the charter without charter amendment they have to go to voters.
Correct, yes, but, but if, what, I mean, statutorily, is there, is there, uh, a minimum amount of, of power or authority that the planning commission should have?
Yes, it's outlined in the charter.
Where are the charters?
Where's the charters?
I don't wanna make it, so it's not...
No, no, it's not, where do you wanna make it?
No, I know, I know it's the charter, but the charter is what we made.
Right, the charter is what voters made.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the charter outlines what to do as a planning commission ordinance. The council has no authority to change the charter.
Right.
The council has the authority to put on a ballot a charter amendment that will be voted on by the voters to change the charter. Council does, however, have the authority to extend additional or to delegate, is the word used, delegate additional responsibilities to the planning commission. And if council chooses to retrieve those delegated duties, they can do that. But they cannot, they cannot, they cannot remove the duties that the charter bestows upon the planning commission amendment, the charter, which is a burden.
Okay. And what would be, like, how does approach should of, is what would be the process for, uh, investigating the duties or, excuse me, the authority that they have now and changing that, making that change?
I mean, the two planning committee code for projects.
There would be a money committee to review that, to...
Yeah, I guess, I would, I guess what you're saying is the duties that are beyond which are outlined in the charter.
Correct.
Um, we would have to probably go through all of the ordinances to determine where council has, um, extended authority or delegated authority to planning commission. For example, with signs, I think with fences, I think with swimming pools, I, there's a lot of areas.
Additions?
Additions and can, there's a lot of areas in the ordinances where the city has delegated to the planning commission some oversight in those areas. So it would, uh, it would, I mean, it can be done, it would take an extensive review of the charters to see where, today it's not as extensive as it used to be because we can do word search and see where the planning commission is referred to and what they're required to do. But, yeah, it's possible to go in and amend all the ordinances and to retrieve some or all of those delegated duties.
Good. And that would be the first step in doing this, just to figure out what duties they have or...
Yeah.
You'd have to identify, you'd have to identify the ordinances, say, and then decide
Which that can be done, it's just, you do by word search and then look at the text to see what's there. It can be done. But it could potentially involve amending multiple provisions of multiple chapters of the ordinances.
Right.
Which, again, is no big deal, it can be done.
Any, uh, it would be a case to, uh, we'll get to that here. Uh, the resolution prefer to be, uh, uh, twenty fifteen oh two? Okay, President Council, next regular council meeting will be held Tuesday, June sixteen, two thousand fifteen, at seven o'clock. We're not, um, Director of Budget?
Uh, yes, tonight we issued the service tablets to the council and the mayor, um, instructions and so forth and so on. Uh, so we're hoping that you'll get familiar with those and, uh, the next, uh, I need to provide the April, I need your statements, so we're gonna hopefully have those two by the weekend, early next week. And I'll be sending an email out till you know to go out to your tablet and go into Google Drive and, uh, it's such that it says share, shared with me, so, and you can start to look at them and then we'll discuss them at our next council meeting. Um, just another, just an FYI, tomorrow I'll be attending a roundtable. Um, it's the Ohio Auditor of State Legislative Roundtable. It's just an hour long, it's entailed, it's an opportunity to discuss, um, with the state auditor's office, legislative issues facing treasurers, fiscal officers, et cetera, and other local government officials. So I've not attended this before, but we'll see, I may just be there listening and networking and so forth. And then all of next week, I will be at the office. I'll be attending the Ohio Public Clients Officers Training Institute. This is put on by the Ohio Association of Public Treasurers in conjunction with Ohio State University John Glenn College of Public Affairs. Um, topics such as governmental accounting, investing in public funds, um, financial reporting, revenue collections, public budgeting, and all that kind of good stuff. I think it's gonna be very, um, very helpful. I was able to get the scholarship for the five hundred and twenty-five dollar tuition, so that is...
Cool, great.
Yeah, so that I was pleased with that. So I'll be anxious to report on that the next meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions? Is there, Chris, is there any, uh, uh, update on the, uh, the infrastructure needs that, uh, Mr. Valerie had, yeah, if we could expand the list, more detailed list of...
I think you probably are as aware of it and I think you've probably discussed maybe at the committee meetings, Mayor? Has we talked about that yet or are we still putting no...
We had, we had a, um, little bit of a discussion that, uh, we will be ready to discuss that next, uh, next week at committee meetings, uh... next week at committee meetings, the, the whole capital, looking out the next three or four years for what needs to be done, plus, we, we will be able to discuss, and invite the Director of Finance to be at the committee meeting, so we can address the budget items, the needs for the next three or four years, and talk about what, what kind of levy that you would want to throw on the ballot.
And she says she's gonna be out of town?
I can be out of town.
You're gonna be out of town?
I'm just called in, I'll come, I'll sit.
What have, what have it done, what have it done, you mean?
We're still, yeah, we're still putting some things together, Thursday, we have a second meeting with the ShoreTel phone system, representative from there who's gonna be giving us some costs and so forth, so we're still kind of putting some things together.
We have only a couple, couple of things early that loose ends to tie up, and we'll get the figures, I'll be ready by next Tuesday.
I'll be ready.
Okay, moving on, Mayor, do you have any information from the, show with us from the Service Department, Service Director?
Service, Service Director has been, has been busy, talking with people in various areas about the latest storm that we had, he was out, the, during that storm, checking the flooding on Highwood and that, the, it indicated to me that the majority flooding was coming down Lindsay because people have enclosed the ditch and water's going out the road, but no flooding to any extent that we had, we had last year, the, I don't recall, and he'll give you an update next week, I don't recall anybody, basement being flooded, the, you know, so, other than that, the, you know, it's pretty much business as usual, and you're there for report next week.
Good question.
Police Chief, he's got, I'm sorry, what was it?
You go, you go, okay.
Police, Police Chief, they have their, the certified bike classes started, I saw not today, they had classroom missed make, and the, that looks, that looks like, like a pretty good course, but I'm not on the bike, no way, there's, there's six to eight students taking it, and, you know, we're, we're pretty lucky to have a certified instructor teaching it, and that'll be going on the rest of the week. Fire Chief, I already said, you know, he's out of, he's on vacation, the Captain Woods and Captain Booker have been, have been in charge, we have a couple extra on days for the week, and things have been going quite smoothly, and Chief Chait won't be back tomorrow, so, we, we do want to, we do want to thank the surrounding communities for mutual aid with the, the fire at Cornerstone, Cogga Falls, Telmich, and Stowe, were, were on the scene, the, you know, it was, it was an almighty ordeal, and, you know, it, it was a big fire and went fast, and, you know, the only thing faster was how fast it hit YouTube, you know, I think the fire started at ten twenty, and by ten thirty, it was on YouTube, you know, so, unless there's any questions?
Okay, quick, quick question, I, I know that the Service Department's definitely working on their, their hands for them now, but I think we can maybe that are probably meant to have those ditches cleaned out, so any flooding won't hurt or help the flooding?
I think, I think that's a good question to, to talk with the Service Director next week about, you know, we do ditching every year, you're, that's something we really need to talk about, you know, I think, and I think, I think that he can explain the problems a lot better than I can, so.
Yeah, but I think that that is the case, we really need to make that for personally.
We talked before, did we put out any correspondence about those people when we were looking at it, or, a lot of us have had their yards like that for thirty years, we said we could put out a letter, I don't think the letter ever went out?
That's something, we, maybe, and I know that.
On the ditching up there, I don't believe.
We have a warrant, it has, the, you know, we, we are sending, we are sending a letter
out on, on the stream, we sent that out, we, we're going to send it out to a couple more residences at LeBlanc Stream that is affecting the Silver Valley campus, and it's the typical same thing, people put debris in there or washes down in there, try to keep people to be mindful of that.
Yeah, I think it's gotten to the point where it should ruin somebody's house, it's gotta have some sort of enforcement policy.
Well, and also ruins, ruins the road.
Yes, exactly, I mean, it's double the sword, it's worse than more money and residents are more money, so we need to have something definitely done.
And the only thing I would like to add to that is, I remember when Chief Bowery was here, talked about some people enclosed their ditches and got permission years ago, so if there's any listing of that.
There's, you know.
Well, I imagine, I don't know that there is, but I can imagine if I had permission twenty years ago to do it, now you come tell me to tear it out, I'm gonna have a bit of a problem.
Changed ownership?
Well, assuming they have of those kinds of things, and a lot of people do it without permission, I know, if we have readily available, probably don't, but if we do, any listing of people that were given permission to do that, it'd be nice to have that information too.
And I understand I hate the guy knocking on doors, hey, you know, you are, but, you know, get, you know, it's fine.
Okay, Mayor, any other questions, moving on, okay, reports of committees, starting with community economic development, we've got brief updates since our last meeting, I attended the ATNAP Plus grand opening in Stowe, which is up off of Hudson Drive on Campus Drive, they expanded their facility, they're doing tremendous, they hired more people, excellent, excellent business for the area, a good one local was Sine School, two streets away from us, has a, what I would call an alternative school, where kids either had issues, it could be attendance, it could be learning, it could be thrown out of the school, they go there, and they just, two nights ago, graduated forty kids from there, and where it ties into us, our great company here, SGS, took it on their own victims for several years, they hired some of these kids to work at their facility, and with the idea maybe they could find one or two that could end up working here, and I went to a presentation last Friday, and they had, I think it was a total of six they had working there, and out of the six, they did hire one for basically a full-time job, and kids were very excited, and they had all the kids do a history of how they got there, where they're going, they're graduating, and what they learned, and, you know, some of the, the one kid went talking in school, he had, he had issues, he couldn't talk, and he got up and talked in front of strangers and did a great job, so kudos to SGS for finding the opportunity for these kids who would never have had a chance somewhere else, and they're doing drug testing and everything else, and these kids are staying clean and showing up for work, and they learned some great life lessons, I was very impressed with, with the presentation program, and I got a chance to see the new SGS Research Center, and it's gorgeous, professional, immaculate, it's hard to believe it's across the street, it's very, very impressive, it was like some NASA quality equipment they got over there, it's very impressive, and they treated us real well, so that was a, a nice plus to see SGS somewhat involved. Yesterday, I got an email from City Hall saying that Tammy was on the ball, and said that she had received the call that they were gonna have a drug program over at Kimpton, I think she sent the message out like at ten fifteen, I think I got it about eleven o'clock when I checked, and it said the program's gonna be one thirty to two thirty, or two thirty, three thirty, and I had a couple appointments, but I'm so ingrained that, I was so happy to hear that we were gonna have something at Kimpton, I canceled the appointment and rescheduled it for today so I could make it over there, and myself, the school psychologist, the school from the Stone Mountain Falls group that we've been meeting with, a counselor from Stone Mountain Falls High School joined us, I brought my son, and I sat through, it's called Robbie's Voice, and hopefully they bring this to Stone Mountain Falls High School, I'll go more into detail, in essence, the time I was giving the synopsis here, but I'll talk more to committee meeting, but it's a gentleman from Indiana that had a family, I think, three children, and his son got caught up on drugs, and he never knew it, kid told his sister, just dumped it on his dad, she never did, kid played sports, kid got good grades, they didn't notice anything until the famous drug thing where money started disappearing, and this and that, grades dropping, the kid got hooked on drugs, and it was two thousand eleven, the guy's very powerful, too, but what I was impressed with, he was talking to just eighth graders, he did seventh graders, then eighth graders, about a tournament, he preached for six minutes saying that he wasn't gonna tell you, I'm not here to tell you to stay off drugs, that's not what this is about, so, he, he broke these kids down pretty good, it wasn't, you know, stay off drugs, let me just tell you some stories, and it was so strong, he puts up pictures, and he said, does this kid look like he's on drugs, and he had a picture of some boy, you know, looks like a football star, and they're like, yeah, and this girl, yeah, 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 the kids were just, every boy was on drugs, they thought he was trying to trick, then he puts his own son up there, they don't know it's his son, and they're like, yeah, no, yeah, a lot, a lot of confusion, and I, what I thought was interesting for eighth graders going into high school, when they brought up marijuana, he broke it down really well, he said, is cigarettes addictive? Yes, everybody's yelling, yes, alcohol? Yes, marijuana, silence and a lot of confusion, and now that they're trying to legalize marijuana, it's gonna be worse, he explained, even if things change in our state, a lot of employers are probably not gonna change that they're gonna do drug testing, marijuana's not gonna be acceptable to a lot of employers, and he had some great research, he also told the kids, if at any time you think I'm full of crap, raise your hand and call me out on that, you know, to my surprise, he got pulled out, I think, twice, one kind of half-heartedly, one where a kid ended up walking out because the eighth grader thought even more about drugs than this, this gentleman, and so, had to research, and he just basically said, hey, there's no scientific proof, the kids were saying, well, marijuana helps cure cancer, that's what they were thinking, he said, what scientific proof do you have on us? Well, you know, we heard that, and so he was just trying to say, there is no scientific proof, and another kid shouts out, nobody's ever died from smoking marijuana, he says, well, there is one death, and he said, in Colorado, in the last couple months, since they legalized out there, wasn't smoking, but ingestion, eating, there was three deaths, so that kind of, it, it, the kids were kind of shocked, I think, to a point, and I thought the presentation hit a home run for some of them that were listening, and I'm hoping to take it to Stone Mountain Falls High School, I know our friends at West Reserve Hospital, and I forgot about bringing that there, and he doesn't charge, just goes strictly on donations, his deal is, I lost my son right under my nose, tried to help him, and it, it's kind of my battle, right, this kid ended up dying from an overdose, he went to Glen Bay, he cleaned out, he was clean a hundred and twenty days, and we all know those statistics on rehab, it's like one out of ten works, if that, he was, joined Ohio National Guard, he was three weeks of being deployed to Afghanistan, that was his goal in life, to be a, you know, go over and fight for freedom, and he bumps into a high school buddy and says, try this new heroin, he tries it, dies, so now what he says is that the sister that, that happened two thousand eleven, now the sister that kept the secret, has to live with this every day, that she never told her parents that, you know, Robbie was on drugs, so, very powerful these kids, their eyes got this big when he said, that's my son, they didn't get the whole deal, so, I thought it hit a home run, and I think it might have enforced some positive thinking about drugs, and he gave them a plan, and I'll talk about it in the committee meeting, but, thank you, West Reserve Hospital in Kimpton for putting that on my, it's a great program, also attended the, they had a defend freedom, that I'll go into more of the next program, it's a group that's got together to say that our veterans are coming back and getting shortchanged, these kids are coming back, they had a presentation, a boy from Cogga Falls got his leg blown off in Iraq or Afghanistan, I forget, and this group did some financial aid, and did some things, and he got out and spoke highly because there's so much negative with the VA hospitals and the government not having the money, people are stepping up trying to help. Tomorrow, while Carissa's learning about the government, I'm going to the Acton Roundtable and hearing the former CIA director, explain how you can keep my eye on Carissa, he's here. They're having, he's Cogga Falls, Cogga Falls graduate, former Cogga Falls resident, and he just retired, so we're sold out, and it should be an interesting talk, I'll bring back that information. On Thursday morning, you're invited, if you cheer anything about economic development, seven thirty AM at the Stone Mountain Falls Chamber office, we're having a professor from University of Acton speak at their office, it's always a good program, and I have some stuff that I'll hold off till we get to Park and Rec. Our next meeting, community economic development, will be Tuesday, June ninth, two thousand fifteen, at six thirty, any questions? Okay, moving on, finance and audit.
Thank you, finance and audit, that earlier this evening, review of check registers four dash three C, five dash one C, and then the electronic payment register four one dash D, and we do not have a bunch of, we do not have our, our reports being applied. On our tablets, so, also talked about, we also discussed proposed ordinance twenty fifteen dash oh five, and apparently eliminates the law director who is not an official employee of the OFC from ERS, pick up, so, sorry. We also discussed the proposed ordinance twenty fifteen oh six, and there was a couple of changes that we recommended, I think this is burned through that, correct? First, the first one was, and this was mine, and some more, so we're just trying to, is it just kind of understood that overtime compensation is that time and a half, it doesn't really say.
Comp, it's the overtime, whatever hours you earn in overtime, your comp will be approved.
Now, Mr. Stall was saying that there's precedence that if the employee has comp time, he can elect to use it whenever he wants, he does not have to get permission to use it at his previous law.
And if I may clarify, it was a court case, Townes lost big time on it, and that comp time, since it was considered an overtime, didn't have to be approved, like I said, I'm taking tomorrow off my comp time, you had to give it to them, now, I, I could make a change again, I just, it's a management issue you may want to check on, Townes should be go familiar with it, because it costs them big time.
So, again, that's the, whether the verbiage needs to be changed from approved to notified by the provided.
Also had a discussion on proposed resolution twenty fifteen eighteen, which is up for first reading tonight, this is just basically changing the financing for a commercial loan to a lease purchase agreement, and we should pass that this meeting as emergency legislation. Real quick, update from Mr. Barnes on the business laws carried forward, and, Mr. Forsen, I think we'll use your marketing. so I think we'll need your marketing partners to go ahead and give us the legislation for that. It will be amended by the state regardless of any way. So. And one thing I didn't, do you want to make that like five years? Is that, you know, about that?
Change it back to eight. Well, here's your idea. I want to see if there is a pro forma piece of legislation out there at the state to implement so that I can just implement authority rather than implementing something now and changing it again in 2015. So I'll take a look and see if I can get it out.
Our next finance and audit meeting will begin Tuesday, June sixteenth, June at six thirty. And we will also have some discussions.
Thanks, Gary. General Government Services, Steve.
Yeah, General Government Services has not met since our last meeting. However, a number of us were at the planning commission meeting, discussing with Mr. Hermit and the planning commission members. They're concerned about the sign issue and that, I mean, they're underlying a concern, even though they know there's nothing we can do, they're just kind of hung up on potential bad graphics. However, one issue they did raise, we don't define sign facing. They asked that that be defined because their question was, their situation is what if I have a, what I consider a typical sign face, and I have prior to why I illuminated sign, you know, plastic facing with Steve's store. And I change that with a plastic bag with some letter. I mean, this is what they came up with. So, you know, and again, that, that's their concern is, and they also said there were a number of other things that weren't defined. They were supposed to email those to me. I emailed everybody. I think about that. And I've not heard anything. But that, that seemed to be their, they unders, I don't want to say they even understand. They understand, they don't agree. And that's too bad. It'd be basic premise of.
They just don't need notified. I don't like that because.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They, you know.
I would have told them they're going to be notified. You're not going to be notified.
Well, I guess, I guess in their world, they think for they, you have to be notified. If you design, you have to notify the city for whatever reason. But I don't, I don't like that because there's no.
No need to.
Yeah, exactly. No need to. There's no need to.
It's no purpose.
Well, it's no purpose. So if they notify us and we say, go consult, I don't play, what can we do? You know, because it's notification. So I don't, I just don't take it for granted.
As the legislation eliminates all notifications, the city will not know that the center changes or signs.
Within the sign face, within the parameters of the existing sign, and a new business still has to come in and do all that again and again. I don't like that.
I know the, well, the obligation too, is I think that should, you know, thank you is, is the sign facing, I mean, isn't that defined in what the science office is directed out of suitable building materials or how it's wired with the ordinance?
I don't know if it's defined.
Here's the point. I got the email that you have. I received something, some, I'm not sure who sent it to me, from the planning commission. I will look and see how facing is defined. And if we have to put a definition in there, we can do it. But it doesn't change the fact that what the new legislation is proposing to do is to allow someone to change the facing on their sign without knowing about it.
Right. And I, and I think I made clear that my position was, other than their concern about I could replace a hard plastic with letters with a plastic bags with some definition of sign facing. I mean, that, that I think is about, other than that, I realize I don't agree, but.
Yeah, I just, I did not, still don't understand or can't comprehend the scenario where, why would we want to, why, why does the government want to be involved in that, that part of what's the size of the group, the overall structure of the group by something, what do we care?
Well, they don't care.
Well, I understand. But, but how do you define what's cosmetic and what's not?
Why? They get that.
And that's what, you know, I'm trying to, I think that's what I was trying to explain to them is that it's not our business.
Oh, they want.
They, they want, but the science says, oh, she sucks.
I brought that. Definitely, unless they can say.
Lots of people would, but the reality is, is that, is that business is, unless it's a nuisance or a scene where the case is. And that's what they, they were talking about objectionable. What's objectionable to you might not be to me.
Right. That's going to make it kind of a chronography, you know, doesn't it?
Well, I think the comment is like a, you know, neon purple sign, you know, and it's pretty, pretty much had the assumption you wouldn't approve of that. And I think that's another, you know, that I would like that.
Neon purple is my favorite color.
I don't like it either, but.
Okay, it was an interesting meeting.
Yes. On that issue, let me ask something because I was sent a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes from May twenty sixth. And there was a provision here that said, Mr. Bush said the planning commission asked the law director for a legal opinion of section eleven forty five oh seven M. All signs shall be designed, constructed, and erected in a professional and working light manner, and with materials which are durable for the intended light of the sign. However, they have not received a response from him. I have not, I've never heard, no one ever asked me anything. When I read the minutes, I'm thinking, the planning commission's asked me to do anything. But in the minutes, so I just wanted that corrected on the record. No one from the planning commission's ever asked me to work with that, and particularly that section. But now that I've read the minutes and saw that, I'm going.
I appreciate, I appreciate the words. Other than that, I mean, if we're done with that issue, because I want to talk about it, but we could talk ad nauseam of this. The other thing, on the flooding, when Mr. Wolfley was here last week, I promised him I would get ahold of, or the last meeting, DOES, which I did do. I met with Mike Glenn. And I talked to some residents up there. According to DOES, Mike Glenn, I met with him and, I don't remember the other gentleman's name. But other than the May twelfth, fourteenth flooding, they have no record of pumping sewers out since 2010. And I said, if that's happening, my staff is not following their rules to record it. At, on Hywood. Now, there's been some issues down on Trudy. But on Hywood, they have, it was after midnight, is what they call it, May thirteenth, he gave me a copy of the EPA report they had to file with that. He also says, other than May twelfth, they've got no calls from residents about sewer backup in the Hywood area. Again, this is restricted to the Hywood area. So I've got some contact information. I'm trying to get out to the residents up there that they do have sewer backup. They need to notify DOES so they're aware of it. And also, they have done a lot of metering. They hired a company that puts some meters to measure the flow of the side. I don't know if there is. And that area is the number two problem area that they're aware of in Summit County. They're putting money behind that. County Council has passed the enablement legislation and spends money. They'll be doing work up there this summer. They'll be starting. Part of that is identifying any more combined sewers if there are. They've previously done some of that, such as stormwater drains, going into sanitary and a host of other things. I suggested that before they actually start working, we could have a public information meeting, let people know what's going on, what actions are being taken. And I did advise him, Mr. Wolfley had told us that he had put a backflow preventer in. And he said they can do that. We're not aware of that. We just, we would like to know that for our meeting, for metering purposes, because what those do is, I understand why people do amendment. All they do is move the problem back up stream. I mean, so, I mean, they were very open. They recognize it's a problem. They've put money behind it, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And they will be working up in that area. What's his name? Scott, one of those up there.
Dylan?
Dylan. Scott Dylan. I talked to him. He says he's got videos of them pumping the sewers a lot more often. I asked him, well, I'll be setting up, I'm going to try to set up a meeting. Please bring us.
I'm trying to think. And I would have to go back and, and look at, at the dates. I know that the police documented that sometimes the.
This was from 2010. Now, he said.
It's probably, yeah. Two thousand, a four-year, a four-year span. I don't know.
I see him, but I know they're taking breaks. I can't.
Well, I'm just telling you what I was told. And if his staff is doing things and I'm reporting, he's, I mean, I mean, that's the cold hard fact of it. So if we have that information, we need to get that to him so he can be aware. So, I mean, they have understandably justified, we've come across some criticism, but it appears to me they are trying to move forward, do some things. And if council has no objection, that's going to reach out, and the administration has no objection, that's going to reach out to Mr. Glenn, try to set up a public meeting per se for residents in that area, the council, to come in and talk about what their plan is and what they plan to do. Because, I mean, people need to know because if there is a illegal connection, they're going to have to fix it. And they may not like that because it's going to be at their expense.
I think it's getting to, to the point where it's a, it's a crisis for that part of the city.
Right, right.
And then the, you know, there is, there is a report when, when Brian Glenn was planning on, on the delting up there on fifty nine, that housing allotment by the airport area as study was done. And because they wanted to look into the sanitary sewer on Chirring Cross. And the study came back and basically, what I was told was that the, when it's a moderate to heavy rain storm, sanitary sewers are, are filled when they come into Mountain Falls. And so they made, they made that allotment and it's switched hands. I don't know what they call it now, but they made that allotment, put in a pump so that they could pump it down to Fish Creek instead of putting it into the Chirring Cross.
Right. And the other thing that has happened, and I'm not sure the year, the city of Stone did work on Echo and had grants and stuff, because there were a lot of combined sewers there, that was done. Some of that was previously been done in Mountain Falls. And then unrelated to storm, I know, I think it was Mr. Myona that makes a concern, but others too, about the new war offer, storm water flow. That was new construction. They were required to put in retention. You don't see it because what they chose to do, according to the city of Stone, they have underground holding tanks. For, so that water's not going to run immediately into that stream. They have big tanks underground to hold it then. So they do have underground retention that won't, because that's new construction. They had to do that. That's what the city of Stone, the Department of Defense, so. Those are the things I've been able to find out so far about storm and sewer on the north end of town.
Who'd you talk to? Talk to Calhoun?
Actually, I talked to Calhoun. And then their stormwater engineer, her name escapes me.
Raven Schur.
Yeah.
Could we do, this is like a PSA on, hey, there's sewage in Cole County, and also former staff here to call us. As they know, this is a sewage issue. This is the number to call.
Well, they ask, and so.
Just got to be proactive about that. And it's a business issue.
The, the numbers to call, it's a Shannon and three, these are both free, yeah, nine two six twenty four forty four, or Gene Cooper at nine two six twenty four forty seven. Those are the two numbers they suggest that people call when they have sewer backups so they're aware of it.
Does that have a twenty-four hour seven?
Doesn't say. I don't believe so. I think if you have one in the middle of the night, you probably should call their emergency number and they'll route it through. But then follow up, they'll leave a, a message with these people so they're aware.
I think just for you if you're worried about, again, right now, they.
I think we put it on our website, those types.
And then as you train your staff, when they call in, hey, what can be done? Call this. This is going to be about it. Actively, you know, be proactive and be helpful.
Because we need accurate information.
Steve, did you say that this is the kind of plans to start this, this summer?
Yes.
Wouldn't you let us know or it just?
That's interesting because I thought.
I, I can't tell you. I called them, asked them.
I talked to him a month ago, and he never mentioned, and we talked about, we talked about the sewage backup on, in that area, and he never mentioned a thing.
And do we know what triggers a pump where the truck come on? I know the storm, but if they, you guys say so.
They say it triggered, what triggered them, I may tell them, was a bunch of people calling about the sewage backup and facing.
So they don't, they come out before that even, you know, so.
Again, Mr. Merrick, all they report what was called to me. I mean, I hear this all the time. Oh, they do that more often than that. Well, we need to have some evidence of that. We need to present that to him. I mean, so if his staff's not doing their job, he knows if he's lying to me, I want to call him out on that.
Dylan says he has a video of it.
And I told him, save a long break.
Great. Thanks, Steve.
That concludes my report. Our next meeting is, uh, is it, uh, June ninth at six thirty AM. Unless there's questions.
No questions. Okay, moving on to public safety. Mike?
Yes, public safety has not met since the last meeting. And their scheduled meeting is June the ninth at six thirty. And then Mr. Bucic will be in on that for me. I believe out of town on business. Unless there are, I'm curious on that. One, I did want to give two shout outs. One, Western Reserve, the Riff Gasol is a real nice, right up on the Citizen Academy, and also the, uh, the Night Out.
That was an insert of Show Century?
Right, yes. It was, uh, citizens, citizens night, it's not citizens night out.
National Night Out.
Yeah, National Night Out, yeah. And Officer Holmes and also Chief Boza did an excellent job of putting that together and then coordinating and making it happen. And Western Reserve did a wonderful job fundraising the cost. So shout out to them. And also, I would like to, to thank, uh, our fire chief has done an excellent job training his troops, Captain Berger and Captain Woods, Woods. Did an excellent job, of course, on fire. And it's, it's obvious that their training has paid off. So shout out to them. But I don't have anything else to report or any questions. I know otherwise Sam's going to handle next weekend.
Super. Okay, moving on. Planning Commission?
Thank you. Planning Commission met on May the twenty sixth. There were a couple of items on the agenda that, which we have on our agenda this evening. The first was an application to, to build a new home. And that was originally heavily turned down by Portisoli appeal. But what they did is, you know, there were two adjacent blocks. They moved the house to the second block. And there's really, they still had to have several variations there, but I think they're much more agreeable to everyone. So that, that passed planning commission. And they, and so we had that on our legislation this evening. Second one was, I'm happy to, was announced a new business in town, and that was Tech Ties. And they are at forty-two and a half Mountain Falls Avenue. So that was also, that's also, yeah, that on our agenda for this evening. Last one is one that kind of was interesting to me because, you know, with this legislation, there'd be, you know, the twenty fifteen oh two ordinance, Scissor Room, asked for, basically, new business. However, they're modified. So you've got to see that, you know, what they have currently. And then, but they're asking, now, under our new, you know, under this legislation, they still have to come in on that because they're making the change. And if it was just, and I think they're also, they're raising.
They're raising.
So again, same thing. If you're changing it in any way, you still have to come in on the issue. So I get that. Where, I think, you know, if they, if you took this away and you said, okay. So I get that, where, I think, you know, if they, if you took this away and you said, okay, here's the scissor room and here's our envelope and our new logo is a separate head. That's where they have the problem. And I realize that Morrison, we've talked about this, we can't legislate aesthetics. What I think that they feel is they have kind of a, an obligation to at least bring to the engine of the individual that this is, you know, not really, you know, acceptable. However, the person could just better run and say, yeah, we get that. I think, and then I kind of, I kind of got, um, because those of you attended, I certainly think you, you were able to make it. And as people, as vision people, I think you can sense the passion that they have in this.
Really? Yeah.
Well, this is why.
I'm sure Mike or John would have smacked.
Again, I think their, their heart's in the right place, I mean, looking out from the city. Again, you know, this is, I wanted to make sure that they were, so.
Yeah, I think they're best, they are in the right, in the right place, they are, they, part of my people do that, to be honest, definitely they are, but it's just different things.
I don't know where that goes after, you know, the night vote, we'll see, but, you know, again, I fully appreciate the people out there. And even Mr. Saul, he said, you know, that means, you know, you want to vote and take the off duty, right? There were a couple of issues, especially.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, what synonym culture really does mean. And I think Mr. Morrison, in addition to what they did bring up in the meeting, is that there was several, you know, there was a small amount of.
Right, and I'd happily do it that way, you know, yes, yeah.
Thank you. Next planning commission meeting is Tuesday, June 23rd at 7:00. Okay, thank you, Gary, Park Board Recreation, Sam?
The Park Board has not met since our last round of council meeting. We did honor River Day last Saturday, the 30th. Tradition River Day, it did rain, it did all about until around 2:30, so we recorded the festival at Royland Sunblock. The general consensus was we probably had about the same turnout as we did two years ago, we had several of others, so good turnouts. The flow was a bit different because this year we had a lot of things on the southern end of the property that we've not had in the past. The band, food, the smoke, the reenactors, we're all on the southern end. And we kind of cut down the flow for the tent, which was traditionally been where the action is, but it had its own faults. So it just depended on the time of day, whether or not the tent was crowded or not so crowded. On the bright side, Park Board member JJ Mesko, he was for every tent, so we did report, we didn't care about that. There was no swampy area like there had in past years or long ago. The only count we had was the archery range, there were about 103 individuals that used the 4-inch archery range. And the exhibitors that we spoke with were all happy with our turnout and the, the day in general, so we'll call it a success and start planning for next year. The Park Board will meet this Thursday, June 4th, 7:00 in the centerhouse. Like, who, who, who's any questions?
I just want to say, well, that's actually pleasantly surprising, like, I thought, I didn't, at first, I didn't really ask, but I saw it. It worked out pretty well, I thought, I, at first, I thought the, the distance between the food truck and the band and the tent would be kind of far. Really was, and it, it worked out well, so, you know, they dealt with that.
The, I, I just want to express appreciation to Mulberry Gardens who provided a shovel bus from the Triple Crown parking lot to down here and also to the Monro Falls School System for supplying a bus that ran from Kimpton to down here and there was, and some of the bigger projects that permitted parking in their lot. It seemed like a lot, a lot more people were using the shovel buses. And it was, it was a steady flow all day. It was, uh. I, I really liked the layout. It wasn't crowded that, as it has been in the past when everybody's in the tent. And, um, I thank everybody on the Park Board that, that work hard and, you know, made it a great success.
I could add too, the city really came through, I thought, first of all, you know, the auxiliaries really, there was a lot of traffic on 91 that day. And they really kept things.
They were so great.
Fire department with, you know, having, you know, instead of having the fire engine right there next to the tent, we could add, you know, they stay home at, you know, Station 2. And again, you know, the, the kids could, you know, basically move inside and set, you know, they did. And sirens blaring, you know, because it was a warm morning, that's for sure, and then later spring, the fire goes up and you have like a giant sprinkler system.
Yeah, they had, they had a misty building.
Yeah, that was awesome. And the service department had things, just, they really did.
We had, I believe, we had three, besides Andrew Bowery who doesn't go home or nothing. We had three of the summer help working Saturday.
The fact, again, you know, Chief Boza was on the bicycle, you know, that was, that was wonderful, he said, you know, Azure was coming around in the afternoon.
Yeah, I really, for us, parking is on, you know, and suddenly you have, part of us today is, Munch Pop Street, you're there.
You're right there.
Which is kind of really, when I agree, I parked there and I didn't see anything, it was parked there before, as pretty sure that I think the shovel was occupied. And the parking lot, you know, that lots, which is, is kind of cool.
Every, every once in a while, you know, some of us make, make comments about, especially at the pancake breakfast. Get to meet a lot of people from Monro Falls and, and county, so, and, and same with River Day, you know, and, you know, Gary. It seemed like everybody from Monro Falls was sullen. But the, the fact is that when we get outsiders to come to these events and that, when, when they're looking for a place to go to business or they're looking for a place to buy a new home and to move to, it sticks in their mind. And that's why, that's why our residential prices didn't take the hit that some of the other communities did around us. Gavin took a hit, but not quite as bad and, you know, it, it's good to, it helps your investment, my investment in our, in our homes and in our community and that's why we have, you know, 97% of the businesses are occupied and houses, I don't know what the Brewster market is on, on houses, how long they stay on the market. They don't seem to stay on very long.
I'm sure, they, they sell quicker in Monro Falls, it's definitely. Yeah, and when they move quick, there's never a big inventory in Monro Falls.
You get to show up.
You're on, you're on. 100% right with that, I just like they had, thank you to the fire department for, I went for pancake breakfast and the auxiliary and Chief Boza, the police did a great job. Just two updates, you probably don't know, Sam, I had the opportunity, I was at Chick-fil-A, I was on their business, and I saw the gentleman that worked the booth, he was like Assistant Andrew, I asked him how it went. He said, went great, you know, the rain, and he goes, pretty much wore one in down. He's giving me statistics, he said he sold 130 chicken sandwiches, tons of pop and water, should be coming back next year, he said absolutely, so Chick-fil-A was just thrilled. I just want to comment too, I know we're trying to grow sometimes some younger people and, you know, the, the people that may want to move here. I thought putting Freddie DeMarco's band out by 91, I, I was perfect. Music wasn't too loud, he played a wide variety, his students playing, I think that was, that was a home one, that was definitely something to see with people. A lot of times you go to eat and the band is blasted and it wasn't, he kept the volume just right and traffic coming by noticed it. And I went up to Kimpton because my kid's in love with buses and, you know, he had read that school bus, I can't tell you how many times, but people got on, agreed on, you know, you guys live in Monro Falls, no, where do you live? Three houses down, Chirring Cross, in Stowe, we've never been to this festival, we always, you know, so this year they made it, so. And a couple other people, excuse me, I talked to, were from Stowe and Towne, but that's a positive, you know, bringing some of them, they, they've got relatives and everything else. We just want people there that enjoy it and, you know, gets our numbers up. So I'd have to say, on behalf of City Council, that we appreciate everything, that the Park Board did a great job and the city administration did a great job. I thought it was, you know, the course of rain towards the end and I thought the reserves, some of the water piled up on the one corner and the reserves went over and got rid of the water. I thought that was very, very, very nice, very nice.
It's great having a very engaged park board and who knows people, who does really work. And also I'd like to thank Ron Meyer.
Yeah, definitely.
He's a guy who also, you know, he knows all.
He'll make you geek, he does make you geek.
Yeah, kudos to Ron Meyer.
I'm just curious too, I see this terrific audience, were we able to utilize the, the?
Mr. Segura, did Matt give us your name?
He asked me to drop him off downstairs, I dropped him off, uh, last Wednesday morning.
I didn't see him sitting in my man, so there.
Tammy? Pardon? Tammy downstairs?
Tammy.
Yeah, I gave it to Tammy last Wednesday morning, she said she'd make sure you got it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, thank, thank you, yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, there was a big stack of them.
Okay, moving on, person's appeared before council, please leave comments for three minutes. I'll call you up if you come to lecture and state your name and address for the public record. I'll start with Erin.
I'm Jose.
Jose.
I'm Erin Josek, I live at 239 North Portland Avenue and what brought me out tonight was the concern about the new trash, the new trash that has people. North Portland, as you guys know, there's no sidewalks and I know the new company uses those, those electric arms and I understand the business reason for that. However, leaving the trash cans in the middle of a driveway on that particular road is incredibly dangerous. Not only do I have to stop my car, which has my kid in it, to get out and move it so I can get the driveway, but I also have to worry about all the cross shopping. Portland is probably the third busiest street in the city and we all know people don't pay attention to the speed on my road, I just, they can't even look at the little driveway. In fact, last week, they cleared four, four trucks that rode down, they had to pick it up, they needed body collecting and bicycles. So it's, I know that we have some online traffic guide and people sent comments that tell us, so I'm not gonna tell you that, at least for cars on the city, it's not working right. I'm glad to hear some of the other neighborhoods are having a better experience, let's see if we can get that moved to places where we don't have the sidewalks and that extra space. And the other thing, in regards to the rain on River Day, my daughter always does, is filling up the river. And that's why I'm concerned, so, anyway, also work out.
I'm just curious, where do you put your cans when you move out?
I put, well, I, well, I just learned that I'm not supposed to put them next to your turner, which is fine, we don't do that, but we're putting them on, on the edges outside of the driveway so that we can clear their turn. I mean, I come in from, let's see, that big east side of the road when I come home from work, and so I've done make that right hand turn into the driveway and it's, it's, it's an accident way to happen, the way they do casually, just throwing it about. It happened occasionally with the old carrier, but it wasn't a weekly occurrence and right now it's a weekly occurrence.
So they're not putting it back where they?
No, not even, not even close, last week when I found out I was supposed to put them off the side of the driveway, they actually, at some point, came by and put them in my driveway on two different sides. So I still had to get out of the car, they hadn't even emptied it out.
Yeah, I would sit myself a couple times, not nearly like, two or three times in my circle, so.
Yeah, well, you guys have the same issue because I, you don't understand.
You know, it's night when they pick up trash at your.
Last week, it wasn't till 6:30 in the evening and I know that they tell us to have an out box like six a.m., which we do, but I know that usually, and last week was a holiday. Usually it's gone by the time I get home, but it just, and it is, I don't even care if they don't come late at night, don't do the, 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 my driveway. I'm gonna get it or my kids could.
They'll monitor that.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's not a safe situation.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
That is now.
Yeah, okay, no problem, thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to mention Mr. Sosik is a park board member, thank you for our hard work over the day.
No problem.
Okay, Michelle, so Barzal?
Barzal.
Barzal, okay.
My name is Michelle Barzal, the 437 Cathy Circle. Recently, I was coming, I couldn't talk about trash, I just, there was some, some situations addressed before, I've lived here. All right, had to put out several large items to be picked up, one time, called them, said, hey, some large items to be picked up, didn't get picked up. Drove them back inside, next week, put them out again, didn't get them picked up, that time I got tired. Drunk around, that's when I put out the sign, thanks, Washington, not. And I put it in front of my house because I'm not happy with them. I got 30 days notice that I was getting new trash picked up, I had prepaid and I somehow got the money back from Kimball. So, so wait, then they come back, well, I got the new service with these, these large trash cans, but that's okay, I'll deal with it. So I went to turn around, put it off again because I said apparently that I put out the sign, I put out the sign and they didn't pick it up the third time. My son named a, an Asian person, turned around, saw the sign was still out there, but he got home from school, picked up the sign, went across the street to somebody else's house and waited until they got, got people to come along and basically said, and just stared at them until they took the sign and put it away. So you have my son tonight, come back, he got rid of the, the sign. Having said that, they don't put it in the middle of my driveway, they do leave them all over the place. I do have trash treated all over the place, I'll pick it up and put it back in and then bring it out the next week around. I don't know what's going on here, I have called them when I put the items up, but it's, sure, we'll pick them up, we'll pick them up, we should have picked them up, and they didn't pick them up twice. So, or actually, three times, maybe count the third time with my son, the new village, he was. One of the things that I wanted to ask about since you were talking is how do we get information out about the national lineup that's crying because from the ones that are on the One World Page, we didn't know about it, otherwise I would have been able to report myself. The ditches behind Cathy in Highwood, the ones that are between them, they're not cleaned out. I don't know who's saying what, but I want to look at it myself, if there's overgrown, it's needs to be cleaned out, it's really, there's a lot of vegetation back there. I'm not sure if their volume is considering a few of them, but there is too much stuff in there. And this is kind of for the residents themselves when I talk to them, as well as looking at myself, because I live at the Cathy Circle. Here is a house on Tri-Cross Circle, about Cathy Corner from you, I think it's abandoned, and Eris coming back to me as my 62 year old. Getting to the teenagers, it's abandoned, went to compete, got it myself. Fence is falling in, nothing in the windows, think we might have a abandoned house on hands. So you might want to take that into consideration, considering the fact that we are trying to have a drug use problem, leave a house abandoned, watch teenagers walk to it. And if my son goes about it, I can guarantee you have, I still already knows.
We're a work of that house, yeah.
Oh, sort of being work of, okay, because, wow, the guys that live across the way from friends, then you're kind of getting a little of the concerns, I can hear shouts when you're going there. You're figuring it out. How big is the underwater retention of the church? They have new tanks, they're retaining retention of water, they're talking about retention of water. Well, that church is kind of concerning me because I live on Chirring Cross in that area, I just had a little couple feet higher, so there are some neighbors, so I can't think of this back, but runoff. We're already feeling a little block of runoff. Yes, this last time we're not gonna flood it, but if those ditches have not been cleaned out, and I know something has been made out on the record. And when they're looking at a church with new construction with a lot of backtalk, we're gonna have runoff. How much will runoff, are we gonna be able to take before we do have any major flooding or running out? And there's certainly a big, big problem with those, you're gonna be talking about, I'm sitting right in the middle of that and I do have concerns about that because I have elderly people that live around me. We don't have to take care of them, we end up running out there, they say you can, the middle of the night, but we're in the water. So, also, my last, final question is, is that what is the emergency number for the sewer backup? You gave me the two numbers that I'm to call, do we have emergency number so I can put it on the site?
I do not have it up hand.
I mean.
Yeah, we have one at the police department, we'll, we'll get it to you, I'm not sure if it's on the website, but we have one.
And the county, should we have counties for the DOES website?
The reason is being that I want to get this out to residents, if we can, at least on, on the website that, that I, you know, on the main website that I'm on, that I want to make sure that it's given to them and when I start seeing flooding happen, that I can get to my neighbors. I make a phone call if they can't.
Right.
It is a concern, like, it's like the little ladies and such that are all by themselves.
Right.
And I've got a single parent with, you know, children, so, I don't want to say they're running to the rescue, but. I don't want to say they're running to the rescue, but if I can lend help, I can. I'm going to, but if they have a phone call, I'm going to. And if I can come up here and look at you and say, please clean out the ditch between Tri-Cross or between Cathy Circle and Highwood, please clean out the ditch, um, so we can get this taken care of. I think the ditch is over and it may have been moving around. It may just consider this whole ditch out. It's not full, but you're good with it because everything that backs up, he even will tell you, anything that backs up that stops the air and feeds the flow of that water is going to turn around and it doesn't, our backyard is backing up worse. And so, they have to clean it up.
Let me, we could address your, uh, your prepaid. Uh, when I talked to both Kimball and, um, Republic upon that, uh, I was told that people that had prepaid were prepaid up to the end of February.
Oh, no, I was paid out for a year.
You were paid for the full year?
Yes.
What did Kimball say? Did you call them?
Well, they said that they're going to give me my money back.
But they're aware of your, they owe you money?
Yes. But not to their urgency, I'm sure, um, of repaying me because it's not as if, what can I possibly do other than to give you back my money?
We'll call, I'll call Kimball.
Okay.
And with, I'm sorry.
Now, this ditch between Highwood and Cathy?
Mm-hmm.
Is, is this the one that, um, it comes out of Highwood and then goes down Cathy and goes under, under Cathy and then goes down over to the school?
It looks as if it goes towards, came out, goes towards Gaylord and runs towards Gaylord and runs, particularly, or, I'm sorry, particularly between the two, because you don't hide that where Cathy's at and that's towards Gaylord. And that those houses are at the very end of Cathy Circle or around that circle, Cathy Drive, that are getting hit the worst.
You're talking about the north end of?
I'm assuming that's the north end. Away from Tri, away from Tri-Cross, towards Gaylord. You know what I'm talking about? Right after the corner that there's Gaylord and there's Cathy, it's right on that corner and they're getting hit the worst. Um, it's right and towards the end of Cathy. Now, I don't know about the really, really nice man who phoned that's on Gaylord that's on Cathy, but those houses that are right, they're getting hit. And you're talking to these people, they're like, hey, we're ready to get here.
Do we have a decent over here, Mr. Segura?
I'm not, uh, the, I'm not sure where that one, I believe that empties out into, um, the, uh, we need the map.
I don't know.
It, I believe that empties out into the, the drain that goes down, uh, Phillips and, and ends up behind, uh, Kempton.
It could very well. However, I think that you're talking about the one that goes, that runs, it turns off and it's in that area. That's where it gets knocked out that most.
There's that, uh, there's a drain that comes from, uh, the Gaylord. So, it's south of, it's south, south of, uh, Phillips and it runs north.
Yes.
And there's another one that comes out of Highwood that runs south. They meet there and they go under, they go under the street.
That's where you're getting a whole lot of that and it wasn't the full ditch. I can look back there and see it. I didn't even walk it. I wasn't going to go back and walk it, which is the drain, but.
EPA likes that.
Yeah, they want, they want to actually.
Like that full ditch.
Because it slowed down the water actually.
And that's where the problem is coming again. It's slowing the water that's going through, we're thinking.
Or that's.
It goes out, that was.
Yes, and, 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 you know, EPA got a lot of, they even guess all over the tree, but I mean, I've got people who are driving. I mean, come on, basically being taken out, how's it going to be taken out for two and $10,000?
And there's going to be heckening in there, you know, these shit of thousands, full of ten.
Well, yeah, it's not, the full ditch is not in the, in the, in the market of a ditch. They'll leave it. But if it's in the market of the ditch and it's anywhere in that area that's a peak flowing, then it needs to go. It's not there for a reason.
Yeah.
It never take up house.
Yeah, so we don't know if there's private property or.
That's, if we don't, then that's really seriously a problem and that's, that's a portion that we need to start relating into and looking at. Because this last time, the major rain, as much as we want to look at it as disaster was avoided, that wasn't a bad rain. That was a bad, bad out rain. I'm not going to maybe a little bit, but that was the.
I agree.
That was what we had.
Mr. Segura, do we have any sort of, uh, storm ward, uh, ordinance? I, I agree, just research that. That's honestly, that's sort of, I don't know much about it, some soda is, that's some sort of ordinance and, like, even for landscape ordinance, how to do a storm ward. Do you have anything of that nature or should we even go there?
We have, we have, uh, ordinances that deal with storm ward.
With that, all of it is.
And some, some of them, uh, deal with, uh, um, the, uh, the nuisance of.
Yeah, that, that's other than that.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you talk, whatever public say we call back the second time with the actual march trash, that when you, when you call complaint, hey, pick it up one day, what's response?
Well, good to go. We'll pick it up. No problem. Thank you very much. And when they did pick it up the second time, you know, I got the, the, the very quiet call from my husband, wait, honey, they didn't pick them up. And I went, okay, I'll deal with it. And then the third time, my son's solid, said, I really don't want to deal with this anymore. So, without my knowledge, he actually went out, dug out the sign and he dug up somebody else's house and watched him pick it up. So.
Was, was this the four-by-eight insulation?
Oh, yes. The insulation in the, uh, the, uh, it was actually not the, it was the paneling that got water damage on this one now.
Is there, is there a size, we have size limitation?
They said they could.
Pick it up. He still had.
I have, 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 I have.
You say, yeah, you have, you have, you have, you sure as heck can pick up.
And I put it out there. It's not a simple, it wasn't out there. They're fine. I, you know, a, you lean it over and you did it.
Well, that, you know, insulation work, that's, needs to be snapped.
I did, 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 I did,
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Iona?
Yes.
We'll do that.
I'm making the motion to adopt a resolution 2015-16.
I'll second.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Steinwaddle?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Iona?
Yes.
Mr. Bucic?
Yes.
Mr. Hagnower? Resolution number 2015-17, a resolution approving and accepting the recommendation of the planning commission on application PC 2015-09 for a new sign and business at East Ohio Skin Rejudication Center at 21 North Main Street, and declaring an emergency.
So say I move to suspend the rules and allow further readings of a resolution 2015-17.
I'll second.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Bucic?
Yes.
Mr. Steinwaddle?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Hagnower?
Yes.
Mr. Iona?
Yes.
And Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt 2015-17.
Okay. Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Iona?
Yes.
Mr. Hagnower?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Steinwaddle?
Yes.
Mr. Bucic? A resolution number 2015-18, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease purchase agreement with People's Bank in the sum of $314,250, in connection with the acquisition of two dump trucks and two ambulance cots, just far tierally low, and declaring an emergency.
I can make a motion to suspend the rules and allow further readings of proposed resolution 2015-18.
I'll second.
A question, I forgot, did it change?
It did not.
No, we don't.
I just checked, it's the same. 2.95. Yes. Okay, Mr. Steinwaddle?
Yes.
Mr. Iona?
Yes.
Mr. Hagnower?
Yes.
Mr. Bucic?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
I can make a motion without proposed resolution 2015-18.
Okay, Mr. Hagnower?
Yes.
Mr. Bucic?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Steinwaddle?
Yes.
Mr. Iona?
Yes.
And Mr. Toth?
Yes. Okay, passed. Resolutions for second reading, none. Resolutions for third reading, none. Old business.
Yeah, what, what do we plan to table the table ordinance of 2015-02?
I, if we can resolve that signage facing definition.
No, that's what I'm gonna do, is I'm gonna look at the definition. I have to tell you, there have been some other things that were memo, that you mean it all to all, including me, that had to do with signage. And there's, and that has to do with how do we define temporary, and what temporary means. And then the mayor has another issue that, as he's asked me to look at in the signing
Not easy, I know, it's.
It says, following five years from the date of adoption, these regulations are five years from the date of any amendment. In other words, any non-conforming sign after five years, they gotta not conform. We're gonna take that out. We've got signs that have been out forever, and.
They're non-conforming.
And they're non-conforming. And the way it currently reads, someone could go out and say, all of those signs are non-conforming, I want them all changed.
Right.
So I'm gonna try and, and clean up some other language so that when it comes back to you, it may be an amendment, an amended ordinance, dealing with your.
I think, yes.
Just a point of, a point of order on the legislation. I sort of remember, and I looked at the minutes, and I didn't see it noted in there, but I sort of remember that it was tabled until the next meeting.
Actually, it was tabled to a date certain the last time, and then it remained tabled because it was.
It was put back on it.
Yeah, it was put back on the table without a designated date.
Okay, I thought you had to designate.
You do have to designate a date.
So, you know, maybe if we're gonna do some more changes, maybe the best would be to take it off the table, defeat it, and come back with all the changes.
Let's just put it on the table until the second meeting in July.
Do we need? I make a motion that ordinance, I guess it's labeled table ordinance, but composed table, whatever, 2015-02 be tabled until the second regular council meeting in July.
Let's retable.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Steinwaddle?
Yes.
Mr. Hagnower?
Yes.
Mr. Iona?
Yes.
Mr. Bucic?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Any other form of permission?
No, we did it before. One thing I would ask you, Mr. Mayor, if you could reach out to the planning commission if they had those, you said you did get some information from the planning commission, remember which one, I tried earlier.
Yeah, I, what I get, I got, someone sent me a copy of the minutes, which I don't typically get from the planning commission. There were some issues in there.
But that, the one you mentioned.
You had.
I had that email.
In yours, right.
But if the planning commission has other, if you could just email them or whatever, because I did ask them at that meeting if they had other issues, please get them to us while Mr. Morrison's reviewing this, and if we can give them a date that, I mean, I want to work with them, but by the same token, if he's doing this forever, if you had other definitions, what we're cleaning this up, let's clean it up.
And they did make it sound like they did have some.
Right, they certainly sounded like they had some.
With respect to the emergency, or with the temporary signs, could we also look at the possibility of extending the time from 45 days to?
Well, it would seem to me, the answer to that is, the city can have banners, signs forever, so make it, and I don't know if you can define a city-approved civic event or something like that, because we all agree, school play, the church, you know, but if it was my personal garage sale, it would be a different issue.
Totally understand.
So I think, you know, it's maybe defined for civic.
Not possible, whatever the case may be.
That, to me, that's the way to deal with that.
I agree.
Because.
Because I don't think the city is any different than the civic organization, in fact, that the city is a civic organization. You know, I personally think that the sign, temporary signs should apply equally to the cities, it has to.
Oh, I.
To determine what the case may be, so, I guess.
Civic organizations operate on donations. Municipalities, take your money.
So, thank you very much.
Civics, what a lot.
I just.
Okay, I'll sort of, I'll do it.
They don't ask for your money. They take your money.
I still, I, I'm like.
I'm all in favor of looking at the cities too, after what I've been, you know.
I just had a quick question. The pack of ties that happens passed by the planning commission, whether it's run on our, the chances.
Well, the new business, the new business, for the time of our, the planning commission did approve.
Yeah, great.
So, under new business or old business, can we make a motion to approve planning commission without the legislation being written, or not yet? Can we do that?
Well, what is the new signage that's listed here?